7:02, I call the Monday, May 15, 2023, meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. If everyone could please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I believe I saw Tammy and Tom here as well for comments from the EAPC.
Just give me one second. And just before we begin, just a reminder.
Oh, sorry, Tammy.
Sorry, Tammy.
I jumped the gun.
Go ahead.
Just a reminder, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the Massachusetts March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting in three ways. They can access it via Zoom, live on Area 58, or in Meeting Room 1 at Town Hall.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, I forgot about the announcement. So, welcome, Tammy. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Just now, my video is, I can't open it.
Tammy, we just made your call, so you should be able to turn your video on now.
There you are.
All good. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Tammy.
I just wanted to say we won't take up too much time, but I just wanted to say that I was lucky enough to be part of some collective teachers across the Southeast Region, Pembroke, Kingston, Plymouth, Carver, Born, to meet with Senator Susan Moran and legislative representatives, Kathleen Monata, sorry, and Matt Marituri, to talk about some of our local issues that are coming up across the state. Some of them, not just these things, but some of the main things we discussed, reinvesting in public education, the end of high stakes tests, the right to strike, and ensuring a dignified retirement. Really, to be able to keep the teachers in the classroom that we have, we are trying to do our best to pass these very important legislations that will help support our teachers in the coming years. So, that was something that I wanted to share. And as we finish out the last year, we look forward to working, continue working in the local level with the Health and Safety Committee, the Scheduling Committee, and all of the other committees that we have set up to prepare us for us to do our best for all of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the comments from the general public portion of our meeting. So, if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. Actually, it looks like we don't have a microphone on the table, but we will certainly get one for someone to use if someone wants to come up and make a statement. If there's anyone that's participating online in Zoom that would like to make a statement, you are welcome to speak. If you could please just put your name into the chat to be recognized. Looks like we have a number of people online with us this evening. So, again, if you're on Zoom and you would like to speak, just please put your name in the chat. Is there anyone here that would like to speak?
And no movement in the chat either.
All right, seeing no movement to the microphone or in the chat, we will move on. Do we have captain's counsel?
No, we just have, we're moving on to approve all the minutes.
Approve of minutes. Okay, great. So, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the April 24, 2023, open session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, I'm sorry, what was the date?
April 24.
April 24, 2023.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to communications.
There are no communications.
Okay, great. So, we're moving right along to reports from the superintendent.
So, since our last meeting, we do have some personnel updates. We have some new hires. Ben Vitale is a long-term substitute physical education teacher at Carver Middle High School. Sue Spillane is a long-term substitute communications teacher at the middle high school. And Nicole O'Neal is a special education teacher at the middle high school for next school year, for the 23, 24 school year. And we did have one resignation, Elise Nantes, is a bus monitor in special education.
Okay, thank you for that update. So, next, that brings us to Carver Recreation Programming.
Yeah, so the school committee wanted to invite Emily Slavin from Carver Rec to come here this evening, kind of give an overview of our summer programs. So, Emily, thank you for being here. We're excited about hearing what opportunities we'll have for the residents of Carver coming up this summer.
Well, thank you for having me.
Just give me a second to open the presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for joining us.
It was a good idea.
Sorry, Zoom has become, I think I said this is the last meeting?
Yeah, the new format.
Zoom's actually become a new format that's more difficult. You have to open something up, and then you have to reshare it. There we go, there it is.
Okay. So, I just wanted to say thank you for having me. I thought it was a great idea. You know, we work closely with the school and a lot of teachers, so I'm excited to share what we have so far this summer. And we definitely have more stuff to come. So, to start here with this slide, I just wanted to introduce the Carver Recreation Committee. Myself, Emily Slavin, I'm a part-time recreation coordinator. I do have a full-time job that I work during the week, but I work this nights and weekends and seem to always be on call. Ask Ron, he is too. So, I wanted to introduce the committee members that couldn't be here tonight. We have our president, Mary Ross, who has been a staple for Carver Recreation for so many years. She totally helps in everything she can. Her and her husband, Ray, are such a great asset to this town, so kudos to Mary. We have our vice president, Carl Miller, who's been on the committee for quite some time. He brings a lot of his past experience with his children, growing up with youth sports and a lot to the table. We have Caprice Deroche. She came on wanting to see pickleball come through, and exciting that did pass this town meeting, and so we've already, that's gone underway. So, we also have Anthony Fullmind, he's new to the committee. And we have Jackie Lake, who sits here in front, has also a representation here at the school committee. So, newer to the recreation. And so, I just wanted to give a, while we, sorry, it can stay on the slide, but I just wanted to give a little introduction to REC Committee and some of the things we do outside of summer. So, we do free events all year, usually around holidays. We try to do free things for the town. We're also at Carver Night Out, giving away free items, and that's all done from our budget for the year. We do pay for all, split the porta potty cost with the school. We pay for them at the town fields, also at Pond Street, and it's a toss-up whether what account comes out of the ponds for the year, so it's kind of who can do it. And the crazy thing is, those prices have really, really increased, as you guys probably know from the school side of it, so that's a large portion of recreation's budget. We do field maintenance, so we work with the youth sports, we do charge fees, we try to do field maintenance, we work with operations, we also are maintaining the playground and will maintain the pickleball court, so just wanted to add that. And we only meet monthly, and our next meeting is May 24. Anybody is always welcome. It's not always the same day, but we do post it, and it usually is a Tuesday or Wednesday, but we do meet monthly. So, I'm the only one working in between, like month, as far as like, I go to the committee for questions and they help with all the free events, but as far as the summer clinics, it's kind of been something I ran with when I took over. So, here, just a little bit about 2023 summer clinics. The history of recreation is, we've only been in this position of, you know, I think it's almost been four years. And we continue to grow our summer camps. Last year, in 2022, we were able to offer 10 weeks of camp, so that's pretty cool. We do not have a full-time department, so it's not somebody that's always running the camps, not like the Y was or anything like that. And we try to keep our pricing very low because we realize the community is looking to do free to low-priced items, and that's the exciting thing about having the recreation department, is that we can do that for our residents, so we can go to the begin. So, I'm really excited about this. Two years ago, and you can correct me if I'm looking at you, two years ago, you got a COVID grant to do some programs, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, two years ago, you got a COVID grant to do some programs, and last year, Mr. Neef came and asked as recreation, would we partner together to do that? So, we were able to post it through the recreation website, but you then were able to pull out a grant again last year to pay for that, so that they were offered free. This year, we do have to charge for it, but we've kept it at a very low cost, and we've actually been able to even add things. So, here, we have the STEAM summer camp, so the target audience for this is raising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders enrolled, and it's just for Carver Public School members, students. So, we're just keeping it to residents here. The max is 40, and that we held at Carver Middle High School, and they will have two teachers per week. I'm working with Mr. Aruda to set this all up, and the cost is $60 per student. The, all of these things that I'm going to present tonight are actually posted, and I'll go over where you can find them after.
And the last two years, this has been extremely successful.
Yes.
Very popular camp, and all the weeks generally fill up.
Yeah.
So, we're excited about working with REC in terms of facilitating this program.
Yep, so we can go through each of the weeks. So, the next slide is Week 1. So, that's July 11, 12, and 13. They're 9 to 12, and this is the DIY science, and I just put a little bit of like what it is. And so, they're going to be able to do some of the favorite experiments, activities, and it's going to be a fun-filled week, so that's Week 1. Week 2 theme is esports and games, so they're going to be able to learn a little bit about esports and use some of the esports equipment in the school. They're going to play Rocket League, Mario Kart, Smash Brothers, which for this age group is really popular. And then also, they're going to do board games, card games, puzzles, and we'll give students an opportunity to create their own too. And so, I think for this age group, it's great to have the kids not at home doing all these things by themselves. So, this is great. Week 3 will be robotics, so the campus will work with iRobot, complete set of programming challenges. They're going to be able to see how the CMHS Robotics Team works and kind of show them things that are happening in the school. So, that's Week 3. And then, the next three weeks are a little bit different. This is something that hasn't been offered before, and this is still the rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and this is a number of participants, max is 12, so I'm just advertising here first. I have not done any posting, so if you like this, you might want to get online and register because I think it will fill up quickly. So, this is at Billington Sea Kayak, so 41 Branch Point Road in Plymouth, and this is also working with Mr. Aruda and three other teachers. The reason there'll be three is you are on the water, so and the reason the max is 12 is because there needs to be better supervision here. And the cost is $145 per student, which is still an amazing price to be able to get out and kayak and to do so much more. So, if we go to the next slide, this will be three weeks of the same camp, so it's going to be Week 4, 5, and 6, and it's pretty much the whole month of, you know, a large portion of August, and they're going to be able to do kayaking, they're going to do, explore the lake, do various activities, and scavenger hunts, nature, all themed. And I think this will really be really well-received, and we hope someday we can bring this to Carver and do this on our own ponds. That's our goal, so. But we're excited to work with him in Billington Sea, and we were able to get some great prices there. So, we also are offering a volleyball summer camp. This has been happening with Mrs. Bardetti for quite some time. It's been well-received. She needs at least a minimum of 12, a max of 30. Just to kind of give a little bit of information, I've received a lot of questions because the incoming, oh, you're going to throw me off without no slides.
I don't know who to.
Because I don't think mine works here. So, this, this is, I've had a few questions here, is that we, eighth graders want to do it, but if they can try out for this sport, they cannot attend this camp due to MIAA rules. So, I've got a lot of questionnaires because the age 12 to 13 is such a strength, you know, some are entering eighth, some are not. So, it's, I will be reaching out to everybody who signs up just to make sure that she falls within the regulations. She wanted me to make sure of that, but it's a great way to get them ready to try out for volleyball.
Emily, a quick question?
Yeah.
Those are kids going into fourth grade?
So, go, sorry.
It's 4 to 7, so.
Yeah, so kids going into fourth grade. Yep. Thank you. I don't know why mine's locked. Thank you. So, that's kids going into fourth grade and all the way going into sevens.
Perfect.
Yep. So, it's exciting too because we offer, they'll be able to try out, so. We have Cheer Summer Clinic. I want to just do a little shuttle for the Cheer. This is something that Cheer Program here in Carver worked with Recreation, and I do think that the two teams together have worked really well to build this program. When I first started as recreation coordinator, there was, this was a small program of youth sports, and it's really grown between both the board they have and recreation working together. So, they're offering a summer one, but they also offer all-school breaks, so it's kind of worked with the Carver Cowboys Youth Cheer Group and Recreation. We keep the price here a low. We've raised it a little bit in the summer, but we're also able to work with them to help them get this program off, so we've been able to give some of the price, there've been large amounts of kids who have joined this, so we can give the money back to them, and they've been able to purchase mats and work towards, we're helping, you know, by doing these clinics, we're helping build the program. So, this is for, if you want to be part of Cheer or do not want to, you can attend these clinics, ages 5 to 8, 430 to 6, and ages 9 to 12, and June 26 to the 28. We have Tennis Summer Clinic. This year, we have a tennis coach, Mr. Cottrell. I had a mind blank for a second. In the years past, we've also had previous tennis players who have done this camp when he was unable, and he's going to do two weeks, 15 through the 17th, and 22nd to the 24th. These are ages 6 to 7, 8 to 10, 10 to 14. They're an hour time span, and this is 50 for residents and 55 for non. As you can see, we raise it either $5 to $10 for non-residents. In the summer, we try to keep it 5 because we do understand that there is a lot of school choice too, and those kids can attend these, so it's not a problem. And then, this could be any out-of-towners. We have Football Summer Clinic. We're working with Ben Chaffain, and we are doing target ages of 8 to 14, and we have a cost of 60 a resident and 65, and this will also, we're working with him. He's also doing this as a football fundraiser, so he will have his high school team out there, working with the younger kids. But currently, we do have a youth football clinic going on tonight, and we have had summer soccer, I mean, spring soccer clinic, so we're doing a lot even throughout the year, just not in summer. And then, I just wanted to add that we have something coming. We realize that our elementary school-age kids really get mistier a little bit, and so with, you know, Terri Sexton moving on, and she did do a lot, so we're kind of picking up the pieces here, and we're going to be offering a science camp. Mary Ross is working to get some teachers for K through 2, and it's called Oui-Goui Science, so that's coming. Those should be posted in the next week or so. We have a soccer clinic that I'm working with Nikki Tully to do, and I'm working with a corporation to set up a foam party here in Carver. It will be broken into age groups, the Recreation Committee and myself are working on getting this up. It's a company who does these. We're thinking at Forest Street Field, where you could go out and dance and have foam, and maybe we can do other things that day, and that will be something we'll be charging minimal amount for people to attend. We're looking to add an art camp. For those who don't realize, we've done a lot of artwork here in the playground and on the baseball fields, and we're looking to add something this year. And I would love to bring Cooking Camp back, so if you guys know of anyone, I know that we have some tough times finding someone, but I would love to bring that back. It was really well-received years ago. Just a reminder, as I stated, Recreation is not a department like other towns, so if you, we hear this a lot, if you go on other towns, you see that they have a lot more camps. That's because they have full-time departments. We are not a full-time department. We definitely do the best we can, and we work with, mostly work with teachers and coaches because that's the easiest. We do not have a space to perform a lot of these events unless it's through the school, so it's easy when you have a summer teacher, a teacher that is looking to make some summer money and to work with them, but that's not opposed that we're not looking for other people to do summer camps. So, we can go to the next slide. And if you'd like to register for these camps, you can click on carverrecreation.com, and it brings you right to our page, and then you can see it under Programs. It will have all the programs, and you can register. If you have any concerns when registering, you can go ahead and just send me an email. I think the next slide was just my email address, @carverrecreation@gmail.com, @gmail.com. So, if you have, and I will get back to you. I usually respond within 24 hours to give you a username and password, but this is great.
Just a little, again, the Zoom is slower now. It's not better, which doesn't make any sense. You would think they'd improve it and it would be better.
I know.
It's not better.
So, if you go here, this is great.
If you want my opinions.
Because we get this a lot.
When you say click on the website, I clicked on the website. That's how long it took for it to come up.
So, if you go here, this is great. If you go under Register, you can see that to the left, if you register or register now, the one, it will show all the programs that are listed, and we do post everything on our social media, so like our Facebook page in that, you can see any updates. But I just wanted to share that with you guys today, and appreciate you inviting the Carver Recreation. Any questions or concern? I mean, questions or concerns, I'll take anything.
I just want to say thank you as on behalf of the Carver Youth Cheer Board for all of your cooperation. We actually bought our mats today.
Yay.
About three weeks. Our fall registration is open for anybody who is interested in that program as well, and practice schedules will be posted tomorrow.
Yeah, and just so everyone knows, I think this is really good to express this, is that youth programs do not run through Recreation. Currently, our only sports that run through us, Ron and I talk about this all the time, is wrestling runs through Recreation, men's basketball runs through, this year was the first time we took that over. But the sports are, they're independent, but we do work with them. We book the fields, we work with them, we work with the school to utilize, because, you know, as crazy as it sounds, there's not enough fields in between the school and the town to even house all the sports we have here, which is great, not, it's not a problem, it's a, you know, that we're not worried about. So, we do, we do a lot of work as far as youth sports, but they are not run through Recreation, so that's a little different than other towns.
I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing to promote the REC programs. I do think we're, we have a good partnership, and we're building on that partnership in terms of using school staff and providing outstanding opportunities, obviously, for our students, but for all the other people of Carver. So, thank you.
So, if there's any teachers listening and they want to run a summer camp, I would be happy to propose this, and we pay well. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you for all you do. Thank you for sharing it with us. Very exciting summer happenings. We are super lucky to be able to have a REC Committee that's able to offer so many programs within our community, so thank you to all of the members.
So, our next two agenda items, I'm actually, we're excited about telling you about some programs that we've been running at the middle high school. So, first is the Anti-Defamation League Rule of Difference Program, which Mrs. Winslow is the facilitator for that program, and we have several students here. We're going to be here to talk about it a little bit. I wanted to give, just a little background, here, we've partnered with the Anti-Defamation League since 2013 and implementing what's called the World of Difference Program. The program is a peer leadership program where a group of high school students are trained to be peer leaders and implement a program with middle school students. Peer leaders learn to understand and challenge bias and bullying, practice facilitation skills, take on leadership roles in the school while positively impacting school culture, modeling respect, allyship, and civility. This year, we had over 20 high school students who were trained as peer leaders, and some of them are here this evening, and we're currently implementing the program with our sixth-grade students at the new high school. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Trish Winslow as the advisor, and I believe the students, Amanda Byron, Leo Lyman, Demetrius Papoustas, I always want to check that name, Emma Robbins, Sarah Stares, and Dylan Young. And I know we only have two seats at our table. And then, as you've seen, the Zoom is a little slow, so give me a second to get your presentation up.
Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to talk about the World of Difference Program. This year, we do have 24 peer leaders who were trained in the program. They're going to, we have a few here tonight, as Mr. Neef said. They're going to talk to you about the program and also taught, and also show you a lesson, part of a lesson that they have presented to the sixth-grade students this year. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the peer leaders since they're going to talk about the program. So, the, earlier this year, we had an informational meeting where we were looking for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students to become part of this program. So, they attended a meeting, we explained what it would entail, and from there, they needed to apply to be in the program. And basically, they let, they let us know why they wanted to be a peer leader, they need to be in good academic standing and good role models because they are working with the younger students in the building. So, from there, the peer leaders attended a full two-day training with representatives from the World of Difference Institute. So, during those two days, they worked very hard. They participated in many discussions involving diversity, bias, bullying behaviors, and also participated in some of the activities that they would be teaching to the sixth-grade students. So, it's, it's a lot for them because they were missing their classes, they're all extremely involved and very busy, they're in everything, so it's a commitment for them. So, from the two days of training, then they started to meet once a week with me and Mrs. Cabral as well, who helps with the program, and we did some of the lessons that they would be teaching to the sixth-grade students. They work, they work with their group, they plan, and then a few months ago, they started going into the classroom. So, I do give them a lot of credit for joining this program. In previously years, we've always had a veteran group of peer trainers, but due to the pandemic, we, last year, it was our last group that had actually ever been trained. So, they're at, they started from scratch, so they have, they've done a really nice job working with the students, so I'm very proud of them. So, they're going to introduce themselves and go through the program and talk about some of the work they've done this year.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm Dylan Young. I'm a junior at Carver High School, and I decided to become a peer leader to create a safe and fun learning environment for all students at Carver Middle High School.
All right, I'm Leo Lyman. I started, I joined this program because I thought it'd be fun to work with the kids. I enjoy like, you know, working with kids, teaching them, and you know, it's a great message to be spreading around the school.
Sarah, I'm sorry, if you don't mind just sliding the mic across so that everybody hears you at home. We can hear you in the room, but that makes sure everybody can hear you at home.
I'm Sarah Stares. I'm a sophomore, and I wanted to become a peer leader because I remember being in sixth grade and learning all this, so I really wanted to teach it to the upcoming sixth graders.
I'm Amanda, and I'm a sophomore, and like Sarah, I just want to be able to spread the great message to all the sixth graders that I recently announced.
Thanks, Ellen.
I'm Emma Robbins. I'm a sophomore, and I joined because I also remember doing it in sixth grade and just thinking it was a lot of fun and learning a lot of things that definitely helped me and benefited me, so I wanted to do that and also just create a safer and more helpful space in the school.
Right? Thank you.
So, we want to talk a little bit about what the World of Difference Program is. Like Mr. Neef said a couple of minutes ago, the idea is this anti-bias, anti-bullying. We want to teach everybody to be inclusive of each other and make a welcoming community within the school where everybody's equitable, everybody's working together, a nice and inclusive, cohesive community. So, this is the Luddy Zichum Memorial Bridge in Boston. Most of you probably recognize it, and it's named after Leonard Zichum, who was the founder of the Anti-Defamation League. And so, every lesson we teach to the sixth graders, we start out by showing them this. It's a nice visual representation. And then, these are some of the activities that we've done with them. So, the identity icebergs, we took like a picture of an iceberg, the idea being that an iceberg represents a person's personality with the tiny little bit that's above the water you can see and the big bit underneath that you can't see. The star patterns, we had them fill out some stars with things that they identify with. Identity sculptures, we had them build some pipe cleaner sculptures that they, you know, represents their identity, and you guys will see a little bit more of that later. We did a birthday timeline where they order themselves with their birthdays without talking to each other, so they have to work on some different methods of communication. Spontaneous combustion is this little activity where we give them a card, we bring them to the front of the classroom, and they have 30 seconds to talk about whatever's on that card, wherever they want to go with it, that's fine, but they can't sit down until their 30 seconds is up. And then, what makes a And then what makes a group is an activity where we have them all stand in a circle and we give them an identifier. So you might say, who likes the color blue? And they have to find people that have the same grouping or likes as them. And that kind of shows them the differences into people's opinions, but also that that's an okay thing to have.
So at the beginning of all our lessons, we start with reviewing our school motto, which is be respectful, be responsible, and be the best you can be. So being respectful would be treating the other, treating others the way you would want to be treated. Being responsible would be identifying what you can do or say to help prevent intervene hurtful behaviors that happen in the school. And being the best you can be is being open to everyone's ideas, beliefs, and experiences.
So one of the first lessons that we do with the sixth grade students is we have a big giant post-it note that we hang up at the front of the classroom. And we have, just as it is set up here, with the word respect written out. And we have them get into small groups. And what they try to do is they come up with words that begin with each of the letters in the word respect. That should be ground rules, not only in the classroom where they're teaching, but also in their personal lives, in school, at home. Then they usually write it down on a sticky note and then put it where each of the letters would be. We would share it with the class, what everyone came up with, write about four to five for each letter. And we have that poster hanging during all the lessons as just a reminder that these are the rules that they worked together to create, to make sure that it's a safe space for everyone. And then the two words on the right there, oops and ouch. We tell them about the importance of if you say something that hurts someone's feelings, you should say oot, you should say oops. And if you, someone said something to you that you thought was hurtful, that you should say ouch, and the other person would say oops.
So in one of our lessons and activity that we did with the sixth graders was the identity sculptures. And basically, the purpose was of it was to show how different, how similar they are to each other and how they might have not realized that. It increased awareness of the role identity plays on how people see it in the world. It developed an understanding about the impact of trying to understand aspects of one's identity. And it helped them realize that to, you had to develop a safe and respectful environment at Carver Middle High School. So basically, what it was is we would give them pipe cleaners and we like to like engage them in it and give them a chance to be creative and stuff. So we would give them three different pipe cleaners. And for each pipe cleaner, they would mold like the pipe cleaner into a certain shape depicting like what a certain aspect of their identity. So like, for example, you could do like a heart representing like your love for your family or your friends. And you do that for two others. And then we would, if they felt comfortable with it, they would show it to the class and describe their sculptures by saying, I am, and what it is, and why it is important to them and how it shows an aspect of their identity.
And just how Emma was saying, once they're finished making their sculptures, we go around and if they're comfortable saying, we have them explaining each part of their sculpture and how it connects to each other to form like their identity and how it is important to them.
Thank you very much. That was an outstanding presentation. Thank you for taking the time and sharing with us all the great things that are happening in the World of Difference Program. With the goal really of having us all work together as a school community to be safe and supportive for all students. That's really, that's really the goal. And this is a program that has been implemented to achieve, help achieve that.
Yeah, this was great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? It's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you so much for making this program available to our students. I look forward to hearing more about their lessons and teachings. Just it's, it's great. This is one of those things that it's important for us to highlight, right? Because unless you're involved, you might not know the program exists. So thank you for coming tonight and for sharing it with us and for bringing it to our district. So, thank you very much.
Trish is going to be up again.
Yes.
So the second program we want to share with the committee that happened this fall, I'm sorry, the spring, and it's happening again, actually, we have two sessions. It's called our Safe Sitters Program. And it's being facilitated by Mrs. Winslow and Mrs. Grady, Mrs. Showen, and Mrs. Townsend. And we're happy to have some students here with us. Samantha Canali, Olivia Courage, Corinne Sincere, Mila. Mila, I hope I say your name right. Selasik, no, Selasik.
Selasik.
Selasik, there you go. Mila Selasik and Lilliana Moretti. So we actually did a Safe Sitter Program for students in sixth grade as during WIN. The program provides students with essential training in terms of babysitting skills and the work they need, the work and skills you need to be a babysitter. And at the end, all the students are certified as babysitters. So they're going to be here to give us an overview of the program. Give me a half a second again so I can get it up on Zoom.
Welcome. Thank you for being here and sharing your experiences with us. We love to hear from students. So thank you for bringing them, sharing their voice.
So as Mr. Neef said, we started this program as a result of the wind blocking implemented at our school. As a group, we were looking for something meaningful to offer to the students. And as a group, we came up with this idea and became certified trainers and brought it to this great group of students.
But I don't know if you should all introduce yourselves.
Yeah, absolutely. Please do. Please do. Yeah, into a microphone as well, so everyone at home can hear.
Hi, I'm Trisha Winslow. I'm the guidance counselor at the middle school and department chair for the middle high school.
Thank you.
I'm Andrew Townsend. I'm the speech pathologist at the middle high and the special ed department chair for the middle high school.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Showen, the school nurse at Carver Middle High School.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessie Grady. I'm the school psychologist and team chair at the middle high school.
Thank you.
So the Safe Sitter Program was established from a woman who had experience with loss. Somebody had, a small child had lost their life due to choking. And they thought that they needed to establish a program to teach children and babysitters how to be proactive and know the dangers and what was essential for babysitting. So that came to be about. So we started it for grades six through eight. We had a large population of students who wanted to participate. So we decided to start through the grades. So our first group was sixth graders and now we have a seventh grade group. And so there's role playing and videos and a lot of discussion and teaching throughout, and then they become certified at the end. So our thank you, so North Star Refrigeration in Plymouth, Massachusetts actually funded a lot of our startup costs. So they donated and started the cost for 28 students to become certified. So all their materials and what they needed, a family of our CPR mannequins so that they could demonstrate their knowledge of CPR skills. The dolls for diapering, our swag and our training for the four of us to become trained, certified. And they plan to donate more money next year, so another round of 28 students can be certified as well. So that's free of charge for the students to become certified babysitters and start their little, you know, ventures into employment world. And then we also wanted to thank our students. They were a great group. They were very enthusiastic. And then our administration and the WIN opportunity to be able to do this for, for the kids.
That is awesome.
So my job was to introduce these fine, young, safe sitters. Mr. Neef already read their names. I did want to, she said we had a huge response. When we first put out an email looking for students who might be interested, I think we had over 80 responses.
Wow.
In just the sixth and seventh grade. So it really came, we decided to focus on sixth grade as kind of our pilot program. And then we kind of did a lottery system and we had a great, great group of kids. So they want to introduce themselves and they're going to tell you a little bit about why they wanted to be part of this babysitting group and what they hoped to be, to get out of it. And then they're going to talk a little bit about what we, what we did during the group, okay?
Hi, my name's Olivia Courage. I'm in sixth grade. And I wanted to become a babysitter because when I was little, I actually had a few babysitters that babysat me. And my parents, every time my parents would leave to go out for like a date night or something, I would feel very like sad because I was very close with my parents. And just seeing them leave, it just made me sad. So, but then when I got some good babysitters, they made me feel welcome. And we did a bunch of entertaining like activities, like watching a movie or playing a game. And it just made me feel so much better and almost as I'd made like friends. And I was around three or four at this age, so it felt nice. So I kind of just wanted to become that and give young or like people younger than me that feeling that they can feel safe and welcome in this area and that I can like show them new stuff.
Hi, I'm Corinne Sincere and I became a babysitter because, uh, I don't know, wait. Just like the idea of helping people, like, I don't know, I just want to be able to help people in stuff like that, in money.
I'm Mila Selasik and I want to become a babysitter because I really like kids and they're really fun to hang out with. And also the money. And, yeah.
Hi, I'm Samantha Canali and I decided to be a babysitter because I have a lot of younger cousins and I have a little sister. So like I, you know, thinking of like I could babysit them and get some money because I have a lot of vacations coming up this summer.
I'm Lily Moretti and I wanted to be a babysitter because I like to like just help kids. And I have a little brother that I can babysit and he's kind of crazy. But, yeah, and just like being a babysitter and like helping people.
So some topics we covered were safety skills, childcare skills, behavior management, first aid and rescue skills.
Stage of child development.
Life and business skills. And safety in online world.
And then we asked them what were kind of the key takeaway points that we discussed, things we elaborated on. These were the points they picked out and they just want to talk about some a little bit more.
So the safety phrase is like if you don't feel comfortable or you're not safe, you say, I want to be, I, I'm ready to be picked up now. And it's basically telling your parent, I need to be picked up now, questions asked later because I need to get out right now.
So ASAP is in abbreviation for ABLE, Safety, Availability, and Permission. ABLE means like, are you free and if you can take this job? Safety means like, let's say there's like a vicious dog that you don't feel comfortable being near. So you pick if you want this job or not, considering that. Availability kind of goes with ABLE. If you're like not able to make it and if you're not free. And permission, you have to get your parents' permission before any of these because they're, they have control over you.
Best routine is the B stands for bedtime, the E stands for entertainment, the S stands for snacks and meals, and the T stands for toileting.
How to charge for babysitting or decline babysitting? For charging, you could like say like I, I, I charge like 10 bucks like an hour, like five bucks. And then declining is like, oh, I can't, I have, I can't like get this babysitting job. I have a basketball meeting or like anything, or I made plans, or I made plans with my family to go to like a birthday party or something.
No, it's cut off there a little bit.
Managing difficult situations. So managing difficult situations means like if like a kid got hurt, you have to figure out if you can, if you manage it yourself, call a backup adult or call 911.
Can I have the paper?
Yeah.
So some of the stuff with managing difficult situations is diapering. So I don't know if you're able, I don't think you're like, for your first few years of babysitting, you can't really babysit little kids under like one. You should probably go for kids over that age just so you understand and you're able to actually take care of them without problems. So diapering, but still for toddlers, that still might be a problem. So I don't really, I can't really demonstrate it. Yeah. Yeah, we learned it. For choking rescue, oh.
For choking rescue, we learned how to do abdominal thrust and, yeah, that. Yeah, we basically just learned how to do it and we demonstrated it on dolls.
So for CPR skills, we learned how to do it on different, like an adult or a kid and on a baby and how you have to do different things. So like you have to do different, like for the baby, you have to do back blows and then switch them and then that. Wait, no, that's choking.
You're right. You're right. Yeah, you're right.
And then the, for the, we learned how to do CPR on adults and kids.
Oh, those are some pictures of us.
So there were a lot of hands-on demonstrations, a lot of interactive role playing. That's us teaching the CPR with our mannequins. The kids all made these posters, kind of on their own. They all made posters and decorated the library for us. So these are some more pictures of them doing the different demonstrations. Yep, so this is our graduation ceremony at the end where they all came out and got their certificates and their handbooks. We also had parents come to the graduation. A lot of them came, administration came, Mr. Neef was there. It was a really, really nice day.
Yeah, they were able to do some actual demonstrations for like choking and security.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much. Students, outstanding job.
Or a babysitter, how would we do that?
What? Sorry.
What if we wanted to hire you as a babysitter? How would we get in touch with you? Have we not thought that before yet?
You could like email us. We each have school accounts which have our own emails and I'm sure some, some of us have our own. Most of us have like a phone number so you can message us or call us for an appointment.
Yeah, we should have a directory.
Yeah.
Or you could get us through our.
Because I know a lot of people who would utilize your services, absolutely.
And through the Safe Sitter trainers as well.
Can we go through you? Perfect.
Because we did talk a lot about our online safety and off posting online.
I think this would be a great opportunity too for town meeting. Because a lot of people this year had trouble coming to town meeting because they didn't have sitters. And normally they do. I think this would be a good way to kind of integrate all that.
I would just like to say, ladies, know your worth. Because I heard you say something about $5 an hour. You've got too much knowledge to be undercutting yourself like that, okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Fifty bucks. We're free if you want us, um, for your kids, so.
Well, thank you very much. Another amazing program. Thank you, thank you so much for, for coming. Thank you for bringing the program, thank you for coming and sharing your stories. It's so great when we have students come and share what they're doing in our buildings, it just brings me such joy. It's just so great to see. That's great, thank you for helping with the seating arrangements, Mrs. Cabral. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, that was so great.
Yeah, I loved that.
Right? Okay, so that brings us to.
Day on the Hill.
Day on the Hill.
So on Thursday, May fifth, uh, Stephanie, myself, Katie, uh, Corinne Clarity, Shannon Stresky and Dylan Young attended the MAS C Day on the Hill. Uh, we did have the opportunity to meet with Representative Susan, uh, Williams Gifford and an aide from Senator Pacico's office. Um, in your background, I linked the legislative priorities, which listed, I think there were actually twenty this year. Uh, specific legislative priorities outlined by MAS C, uh, that they were asking us to go and speak to our representatives about, uh, which we, as I said, we had the opportunity to do that and to advocate for, uh, things we'd like to see or, or as a school district and change, you know, in the state, at the state level in terms of pending legislation. Um, so I'm just gonna talk about five of the specific, uh, legislative priorities that I thought were relative, relevant. Obviously, Katie or Stephanie, you can add or subtract from the list that I selected. Um, so number one, uh, was full funding of special education circuit breaker. Uh, law advocating, MAS C this year is actually advocating for ninety percent reimbursement. And Mr. Gifford, I don't know if you heard that number from anybody. Uh, over the currently budget seventy-five percent. And in previous years, actually, the, the law has called for seventy-five percent reimbursement on circuit breaker. Uh, but in many years, the legislature doesn't actually fund it at seventy-five percent. Uh, since the pandemic, they've pretty consistently been funding it at seventy-five percent, so that's been a little bit of a change. Uh, so MAS C, MAS C saying, well, let's do a little bit better, uh, and see if we can get to a ninety percent reimbursement rate. Uh, they're also looking to reduce the threshold, uh, by twenty-five percent, allowing for more special education costs to be eligible for reimbursement. Uh, just in terms of special ed circuit breaker, I should have started with this for our audience out there that's listening. I'll give a really high-level overview, uh, in terms of what circuit breaker is. So in essence, uh, what the state says is that if you're, um, if you have a special education cost for an individual student, uh, that is two times the foundation budget, which I'm gonna throw a number out, which is approximately around forty-five thousand dollars. Um, that if your cost for that one student is over forty-five thousand dollars in one year, and forty, again, forty thousand approximate, um, then you get reimbursed by the state the next year. But they don't reimburse a hundred percent of that cost, they reimburse a percentage. Uh, and as I said, the law states that seventy-five percent is subject to appropriations. But on a year-to-year basis, in many years previous to the pandemic, they didn't even fund circuit breaker at seventy-five percent. Though, as I said, the state's done a, a better job in the last couple of years of funding at seventy-five percent. And I believe in both versions of the budget for this year, and it's being funded, the proposal both by the House and the Governor. Uh, I, and I don't know about Senate's budget, I believe it had it, they all have it, they all have it at seventy-five percent for this year. But MAS C is actually looking to have a bill higher than seventy-five percent. The other piece of that is this whole concept of, uh, what the threshold is. MAS C is also saying, let's lower the threshold, instead of the number being forty-five thousand dollars, let's low, let's lower that by twenty-five percent. So that would obviously bring more funding back to individual towns. S- circuit breaker funding comes a year behind, so we get the re- the reimbursements we're receiving this year for last year's special ed cases, if that makes sense, so it comes one year in the rear. Uh, because they have to look at the costs, you have to say for the, you know, because a student might move or it might change placement or, so they look at, okay, this is what it was last year for you, these are the students who qualify on the circuit breaker. Here's the amount of money you're gonna receive over, uh, four periods. Uh, so obviously the goal here is special ed costs are al- always a drive for everybody. You know, as we said, when we looked at this year's budget, uh, special ed costs were, were gonna be up for us. Now, we wouldn't see that circuit break reimbursement until the next fiscal year, because it's a year behind. Uh, but obviously we're always advocating for, um, the legislator, legislature to find ways uh, to carry the burden of some of those really high, uh, placements for individual students. You know, so an individual student placement can run anywhere from that fifty thou- fifty thousand dollar range to two hundred thousand dollars, depending on the individual needs of the students. Uh, so, uh, we would always be supportive of, uh, the state doing as much as they can to support us on our special education costs. Uh, the second one I would identify is what, uh, MAS C is calling the Children's Service Safety Net. Uh, MAS C is advocating for increasing funding for state agencies that support students. In essence, saying that this is really, this is a global issue. The school can't solve all the issues and, or manage all the challenges that students face. So that the state should beyond funding schools, should also be funding, um, you know, those other areas like mental health, uh, food services, healthcare, you know, what are all DCF? You know, what are all the state agencies that are out there to support children? It shouldn't only, let's not fund the schools only, let's fund everybody. Let's, let's fund the entire network of state agencies that are supposed to be working together to support all of our students. So certainly we would be supportive of, uh, increasing funding in all those areas, because those supports will help all of our kids. I know this is a, a passion of, I think, everybody on the school committee. Uh, and everybody within our community is maintaining the free breakfast and free lunch for all students. Uh, you know, so there, that's clearly a point of advocacy for MAS C. Um, the fourth one I would identify is, uh, rethinking the state accountability system. Uh, MAS C is advocating for the rethinking of the purpose of the MCAS test. Uh, possibly eliminating the MCAS graduation requirement for tenth grade students or students before they graduate. Uh, and limiting the use of test results, uh, to diagnostic and professional practice improvement for educators. Say, so they're not totally saying, let's get rid of MCAS, they're saying, let's, let's modify what we do with it. So it's, we have this data, maybe the data is important, but maybe we shouldn't tie it directly to a graduation requirement. Or maybe we should just be using it to see and help students grow, using it for those purposes. Uh, then more the high stakes piece. Um, and then the last one, um, number five, uh, establish incentives for more students to become educators and or remain in the field to serve children where, where they're in the most need. You know, ultimately, I think that this is gonna become a priority. Uh, over the last year or two, we've, it's become more challenging, uh, to hire staff. Uh, we as a district in particular are seeing the difficulty really in hiring some special education positions, uh, which is a little bit of a shift. Uh, so we used to have a pretty robust, um, application pool. And it's thinner than it has been in previous years. And I think we need to be looking at encouraging, uh, students coming out of, out of high school and out of college, uh, to pursue careers in education. So MAS C is saying, let's make that a priority and see what we can do to establish some incentives to have students want to, uh, leave college, uh, and go on and, uh, join the educational workforce. So those are the five that I pulled out, and certainly I would turn it to Stephanie or, uh, Katie if they had any other thoughts on uh, the priorities and the, or what happened or our discussions on that day.
Um, I just would like to say that it was excellent getting to spend the day with the three students and see how passionate they were about pretty much the same issues that we are passionate about. Um, and like they're taking control of their own education. I found that extremely impressive and they were wonderful young people. Um, and it was great to be able to get a chance to have our voices heard on things like the MCAS and the free lunches and to let, um, Susan know that it was that, those were things that were very important to us and to our community.
Agreed, I love student voice. Like having all of the students join our meeting tonight, it's, they're why we're here, right? They're what we're all working towards, right? Creating that safe, supportive, um, environment where they can learn and grow and, you know, exceed even their own concept of what their potential could be. Um, so it's always great to have, um, student voice and I, one thing, one common theme I've heard throughout the last, I don't know, a year and a half with MAS C and working in advocacy in conjunction with them and the NSBA is how, um, the legislative body really wants to hear that student voice. So, um, it was great that we had some students go. The timing was a little, um, difficult for, challenging for some students because it was in the middle of APA exams. So we were fortunate that we had, um, a few stu- three students join us. Some other districts had more, some other districts had less, some had none, um, because of those challenges with, um, APA exams, so.
And AP exams and also athletics is always a challenge, just because they end after school and if you go into Boston for the day, it's hard to get back for a game after school.
Right? So, um, but it was great to have, um, students there. Um, so one thing I want to, um, highlight, not in terms of priorities, but just in terms of some of the programming that they had. Um, we got to hear from, um, Representative Denise Garlick, uh, she's the House Chair of the Committee on Education and Representative Steve Altrino, who's the House Vice Chair on the Committee on Education. And they are both so passionate about, um, public education. Um, she was a nurse, um, he was a teacher, um, they have both served, um, in a multiple, multitude of different roles. And they're both very excited, um, to be on the Committee on Education. And they also want to hear from us, they want to hear from, um, you know, they want to hear from administration, they want to hear from school committees, they want to hear from students. Um, so again, it's another opportunity for us to, you know, use our collective voices and, um, advocate for improvements. Um, so it was really, I thought, they were both great speakers, they were both, um, you could see how passionate they were, they were very engaging. Um, so I would like to see us, you know, do a little bit more, um, in terms of sharing our stories with them. Because we do have so many amazing stories to tell, so, um, I'm excited to continue to share those things, especially when you have people, you know, people's on the, people on those committees that are as passionate as we are about it, right?
Well, and also they were very receptive to listening about how, how the, like, they were very, um, Representative Gifford was super receptive, but to hearing how the classroom has changed as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it's, especially coming out of COVID, children have a lot of different issues that weren't there socially and emotionally. And it's very different for teachers and what they're dealing with. And they were, it, it just felt really good to have that confirmation that, yes, we understand that you're struggling and we want to know how can we make it better? So that it was, I felt it was a very positive experience.
Right, I thought it was great. So thankful that we had the opportunity to go and looking forward to, um, next year, hopefully having a bigger group. And I have to say, the culinary students, the lunch that they put on was fabulous.
It was fun.
It was so great to see, um, right, to see, it was so great to see so many students, um, there serving, talking about the meals that they made, um, talking about their schools, um, showing their school pride. It was, um, it was just a great, great overall day. And we had.
We'll have to advocate for the Carver.
I was gonna say that, yeah.
Well, right now, they do only invite the vocational schools.
With the, the building.
They don't invite any public school.
Maybe we could be like, uh, we got pathways though.
Maybe push to have our culinary group.
Yes, I did ask, I did ask how, um, how schools are able to attend. Um, and they said that you just have to ask.
Absolutely.
So if we're, if we're ready next year and if we're in a position next year, then I say that we, um, we extend it and see if we can participate, because that would be amazing to see our students have that opportunity. But they were open to that concept, which was great, because I, I did ask. Because I thought, well, right, we have this great new culinary project coming on, coming up. Um, granted, our students do amazing things with what they have now, but I'm sure it can only expand between now and then. But it was really great to hear the students and see how excited they were to talk about the food they prepared, it was great. So I would love to have our students be able to have that opportunity, so, um, thank you to everyone that came with us and, um, hopefully next year, have a bigger group. But, thank you Scott for, um, putting that on the agenda so we could share that more greatness, a day of advocacy for public education and for our district. And it's great that we have, um, Representative Gifford, who was, like you said, so interested in hearing the student voice, it was great. She really wanted to hear directly from them, so, um, it was great that they all accepted that and, um, shared some of their stories. So, with that, I believe that brings us to upcoming events.
It does.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on a paper agenda, because I only have one screen, so I'm, I'm.
Oh, no.
So I think what I have printed might be, it might be a little out of order.
Uh, so you have a large number of events, which I kind of coming up, they're not coming up on screens, that's okay.
It is unbelievable.
It's amazing how much things are going on in the district, uh, over the next, really month, there's only five weeks of school left. Uh, you know, before we get to the end of school on, on June, um,
Sixteenth.
On June sixteenth, so, and when you, when you look at this calendar, which I'm not sure why it's not coming up in the share on the screen. So sorry for those in Zoom who can't see it. Um, but all, all this information is available, uh, on the, uh, school district calendar on the website. Um, with a lot of events coming up, obviously, school committee, take a look at these events, obviously, we're invited to participate in, in all of these things that are going on, you know, um, so I'm not gonna go through and highlight any specific events here.
Can I, can I make a quick plug?
You can, you, the members of the crew can plug any events they'd like to plug.
I, I would really like to plug Thursday night, the eighteenth multicultural night at the elementary school. Starts at six thirty, uh, Ms. Ms. Crampf, the music teacher, uh, and the DEI committee have been working extremely hard to make this a super fun, welcoming event, um, where you can learn about multiculturalism and there'll be food trucks and games and dancing and I.
Music.
And music, and I am really sad that I will be on a plane to Ireland and miss this.
I believe the event actually does kick off at five.
Oh, it's five, okay, sorry. My bad, I read the wrong thing, so five PM.
Five to seven thirty.
Yeah, I wrote the wrong time, five to seven thirty on Thursday night.
I think four thirty is, I think the four thirty is the setup time.
Yeah, um, elementary school, be there or be square.
Can I just add that from four thirty to five, it's a sensory-friendly opportunity? And then at five, that's when en masse, people can come.
Oh, that's wonderful, I'm so glad that we had that opportunity for, for students and families, thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate that, but yes, this calendar is, is packed full of amazing.
So check, check out the website, uh, go to the school district website and the school calendar. And there's all kinds of events happening over the next month, uh, in the Carver public space.
I'm genuinely sad that I won't be here for it.
You've come to Jamfest.
Right, yeah. I am.
I love a good U L A.
I'm, I'm gonna try to fit it in, we have the, um. I've already committed to that, so. Middle High School that night too. I've committed to that already. I'm gonna try to see if I can do both, but we shall see, but it's great to see so many, um, amazing things. So hopefully people will come out and support our students and support our staff that have worked really hard to put on some of these events, so. Attendance would be greatly appreciated. So that's gonna bring us to recommendations from the superintendent.
And we're gonna turn over Ron, who's gonna do, uh, some financial updates and the FY twenty-three budget transfers.
Thank you, Ron.
Hello, everyone, welcome. Um, so I'll get you started with a couple of updates, um, at the federal and state level, starting over in Washington. You've got an update from the EPA that recently announced some proposed changes to emission standards. Why am I sharing with you EPA announcements? Um, because buried in those, there's a twenty twenty-seven deadline that doesn't pack school buses. Uh, essentially, the emission standards are gonna be decreasing, starting twenty twenty-seven through the early twenty thirties. Um, there's two takeaways as a school committee that you should be aware of regarding that. The first is, we're currently in the process of exploring, uh, application for the EPA Clean School Bus Grant. It's the second tranche of five, um, billion that has been earmarked for clean and improved emission in school buses across the country. Uh, the first tranche was a reimbursement, uh, process, and so this is their first grant process. Um, we're applying for FY twenty-four and with a goal of utilizing a combination of grant and capital funds if we're ultimately awarded to do a pilot program for electric vehicles, school buses here in Carver. Um, I want to temper expectations, I've been going through all the regulations on it. They are prioritizing high-needs communities and urban centers primarily, so urban and high rural, and we're sort of in the middle of that. Uh, so we don't fall into any of their top priority categories, but we're gonna apply anyway. We'll make an effort to see if we can't get the funding for it. The EV vehicles are, uh, very expensive, about four times the price of a typical bus. Uh, but ultimately, if we don't get that funding, we'll continue to work with Massachusetts Environmental Protection as well as all of our vendors to meet those new requirements if they are ultimately enacted. So I'll keep you posted on both the grant and as the EPA sort of tweaks and finalizes the rules when public comment is closed.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Beacon Hill has been busy, uh, I'm sure you're, you've heard a lot about the, you know, state budget development that's underway. I think at our last meeting, I gave you an update on House Ways and Means, they passed their budget, which is great, you know, fifty-six point two billion. I gave you the update on that at our last meeting. It's now on to the Senate, they've already started their work, Senate Ways and Means released their budget. I have a link there for you if you want to take a look at the, the gruesome details, but I'll give you a. But I'll give you a couple of brief highlights, sort of the highlights across the board. So the first is, what's some positive news? Senate Ways and Means supports that minimum Chapter 78 increase from 30 to 60. It's not a huge impact for Carver, but we are one of 172 districts in the Commonwealth that only receive minimum aid. So I think that's a nice nod that the governor, that the House, and the Senate have all agreed that there needs to be some increase in Chapter 70 for those districts that are only getting the minimum aid, Carver being one of those 172. And their appropriation matches all the other, you know, branches at $6.5 billion for statewide education. Similarly, the Senate also has language that mirrors the governors and the Houses regarding, "A mechanism to be determined to support schools in absorbing that 14% increase on out-of-district special education costs for 766 schools." That's phenomenal. No details on exactly what that mechanism looks like, but my assumption would be, once the appropriation, if it's finalized, goes through, then DESI would work out rolling out the rules, the regulatory rules and how that would work. Another benefit that would really help out Carver in particular is that the Senate matches the governor and the House with increases to homeless transportation reimbursement. You've probably heard me at the past, gosh, I don't know, maybe three or four meetings now on transfers, requiring some internal transfers to cover increases in homeless student transportation needs. Those are costs that we typically don't anticipate. We have a general budget for it, but it fluctuates year to year. And this year in particular, Carver is one of many districts across the Commonwealth that have seen a really high number of new homeless students and homeless families. So it's our obligation to support those families, but those costs can be very significant. I'm happy to see the Senate showing an increase there, about $6 million statewide for that reimbursement tranche. That'll be a huge appropriation if that goes through. Oh, the non-resident vocational transportation, Senate matched the governor with that $5 million in statewide reimbursement. It's less of an impact here in Carver. Our numbers are just a little bit lower, but that'd be another benefit for us in terms of transportation reimbursement. The one that we don't see in the Senate Ways and Means is that they didn't recommend that universal school lunch program as part of their FY24. House and governor both included that as, you know, the 161 for their approval in the budget. It doesn't mean it doesn't go through yet. It just means it's gonna be part of the negotiation process as they, as the sausage is made when it comes to building the FY24 state budget. But we'll keep a close eye on that. I know there's been a lot of advocacy already, food service directors, business managers, school committees certainly, advocating for the Senate to reconsider their position on that, and we'll keep you posted there. Lastly, when it comes to the state budget, an interesting bit of news came out just a couple of weeks ago. So if you follow any of the tax revenues, April's tax revenues came in really low, surprisingly low, at the state level. You have the data here, April, you know, brought in about $4.7 billion. That's just about $2 billion less than last year and about $1.5 billion less than what's projected. That's pretty substantial. Ultimately, at this point, it puts the state in the red by, you know, $703 million, so just shy of $1 billion. Not short money. Hearing some of the statements from a variety of lawmakers, the governor included, the large majority of voices have sort of taken this wait-and-see approach to it, that this is only one data point, and they're certainly not wrong about that. But we're really getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so this was a surprising turn for state receipts and state revenue. Two things that I'd ask the committee to keep in the back of your mind, reasons I share this data with you. The first is, this data will probably color the Senate's perspective on what they think about FY24, how they want to shape the budget conversation, the negotiations around, you know, what discretionary funding they want to use. And the second is that we should just keep a close eye on this. October 15th, we do the budget reconciliation at the state level. There's been no talk right now of 9C cuts, but if that is not a blip and becomes a trend, then we may be bracing for 9C cuts at the state level. And that's something that we need to be cautious of when we sort of wade into the budget in July. We'll take an especially conservative approach to our spending early on in the budget process until that reconciliation October goes through at the state level, at which time we can take a little bit of a sigh of relief. They'll have a lot more data in terms of receipts for '24.
Want to give a little quick definition of a 9C cut?
Sorry. So we've been very fortunate with all the COVID money recently. This hasn't been a conversation at the state level in a long time. Chapter 29, Section 9C essentially tells the state of Massachusetts through the governor that you have to have a balanced budget. And if you don't, it authorizes the governor to, through work with legislature, to make cuts mid-year so that you have a balanced budget. One of the challenges of 9C cuts is that if those 9C cuts hit Chapter 70, right, or they hit, you know, general, general municipal funding streams, variety of those, you've already started spending the money. So if you do get a 9C cut in October, November, December, you're a quarter or a half or a third of the way through the spending. And so it just makes it even harder to be able to sort of catch up with that decrease in revenue, right? So that's my big takeaway is, you know, this is not a panic button by any stretch of the imagination at the state level. This is just a caution, pump the brake a little bit. We'll be especially conservative when it comes to spending early on in the fiscal year and keep you posted on that. Sorry, thank you. You've got your warrants there, down to the penny as always, payroll expenses through very quarter four. We're almost done with the fiscal year. FY23 is coming to a close. I'll share with you the transfers and your budget update in detail as always. So you've got your FY23 budget, every account there updated for May. Again, I'll answer any questions you've gotten on the budget in general, but I think first just give you a couple of highlights from your transfers. This is probably one of your last transfers before we start to close out the fiscal year. Maybe four highlights here come to mind. The first is, we just do a spring encumbrance. So folks that do lane changes and those sorts of things, adjustments in salary, we reencumber the funds and then transfer accordingly to, you know, adjust as needed. So you'll see that a bunch of different times on your transfers. The other transfer to bring your attention to, we had a lot of great updates in the athletics programs, baseball, softball, fencing, some additional equipment. There was some campus improvements, if you've been down to the middle high school. We did the wind screens and those sorts of things, as well as an invoice sweep to close out some of our winter invoices as well. As we've talked about the past couple of months, we had some increases in special education out-of-district costs, so a combination of tuitions, testing and transportation. You'll see that reflected in your, your transfers there. And then some unexpected costs when it comes to repairs, so pipe and valve repairs over middle high school, electrician costs for some lights, water system maintenance, those sorts of things. In general, FY23 coming to a close, you're in really good shape for the fourth quarter, which is nice. I feel fortunate to be able to report that to you. And as we get probably to the end of it, I'll give you maybe one more closeout so we can see us wrapping up the fiscal year. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions on this report.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ron, for all of that detail and for all of the tidbits that you bring to us.
Sure.
I think we all appreciate your sharing that information with us.
We'll keep you posted.
As regularly as you do, so thank you very much for that. So with that, we do need a motion to approve the budget transfers.
I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year '23 budget transfers.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, again, thank you, Ron. That brings us to policy.
All right, so policy, I'm gonna policy our way out. There's a lot of policy here.
Yep.
We have four policies that needed additional time to complete the review of as part of our general overview, review of all of the policy manual. So we've been able to complete the review of those four policies and bring those forward tonight. So they were sections in the previous areas of the policy manual that we just weren't ready to act on at that time because we needed some input, most of, actually all of them, because we needed some input from outside resources, whether it be the school district's attorney, the doctors, in the case of the AED policy, and then our own technology staff. So I'll take you through these four policies, if that's okay.
Great, thank you.
The first one is Policy GBE BBA-E, Educated Ethics and Protocols. This is actually a policy that we adopted several years ago, and it really talks about maintaining appropriate boundaries for staff and staff's interactions with students. And really, the updates here is the policy was a little bit outdated because it made references to things like MySpace. Like, that's a very specific example. And so there's not major changes to this policy. We just updated them to reflect more current language in terms of, you know, maintaining appropriate boundaries with students in regards to the internet and social media. It made more general statements in regards to social media instead of naming specific, like, social media platforms like MySpace, which I don't, I don't think anybody's still on MySpace, maybe, maybe someone out there is still on MySpace. So, and we did, we also wanted the attorneys to review this policy. So they have taken a look at it. They have reviewed it. So I'll open it up to any questions anybody might have on this policy. We, remember, no action is required this evening, so this evening is our first reading of all four of these policies. Then any suggestions or questions people have, we can come back and get some answers for our second reading where we'd actually look to move forward and approve these policies. So any questions on the Educated Ethics and Protocols? So if it's okay, I was just gonna go through all four, if that works.
Great, thank you.
So the second policy was Policy EBBA, Automated External Diffusators, or AEDs. It's actually a policy that we're required to have. And as part of this policy, we're actually required to work with a local medical professional, specifically an EDI doctor. So this policy was actually developed in conjunction with Dr. Daniel Muse, who specializes in emergency medicine at, well, he was at Brockton Hospital. Not exactly sure he is right, where he is right now, because Brockton Hospital currently is not open, but that is his background and that is his training. So this policy was actually written and developed with our school nurse, who is here, Karen Schellen, and who's the school district's nurse leader, in conjunction with Dr. Daniel Muse. And as part of this, Dr. Muse has agreed to serve in the role of medical director who oversees our AEDs. So, and that's his specialty. So he's actually reviewed and approved this policy as it is proposed here for this, for you this evening. And again, I would open it up to any questions you might have about the updated AED policy. I will say, I haven't been pulling them all up on home, but I can if people want, just because it's a quick transition that Zoom isn't accepting of. The next one is Policy ECAF, as a policy on security cameras. So this is a policy actually that we currently didn't have as a school district, though we do have security systems on both, security cameras on both our campuses, both external security cameras and internal security cameras. So what we did is, we used the basis of the MASC recommendation for a security camera policy. But I felt that this was a policy that was really appropriate for our attorneys to weigh in on. So we brought this to Stolman Chandler Miller. We asked him to review the MASC policy and make some recommendations. So the policy you have before you this evening, it was actually written by the school district's attorneys, and so they took the MASC as a draft and then revised it to create the security camera policy as it's written here this evening. And certainly, we'd be supportive of following our attorney's recommendations on our policy in regards to security cameras. And the last one was Acceptable Use of Technology. This was actually reviewed by our technology team, who has developed suggested revisions to the policies. In the big picture, the changes are minor and reflect really some updated language in, in terms of terminology. You know, the policy subcommittee had some questions for me that I brought back to the technology staff. The technology staff hasn't addressed all of those concerns yet. So Kelly, I don't know, I was actually thinking it might be a good suggestion, maybe you and, maybe we touch base again on this prior to our next meeting.
Yes.
Because they had some thoughts and suggestions that they'd like to discuss, because we know this is your expertise a little bit. So they'd like to talk to you about that a little bit and get some of your feedback.
Absolutely.
So if you're okay with me setting something up prior to our next meeting to have that discussion, specifically, it was specifically about the password issue.
Yes.
So they had some different recommendations about passwords. That was really, that was really the biggest thing here. And then looking at our old policy, they liked some of the language. I'm gonna pull up a specific, I'm gonna pull up my own reference. So they, they did like some of the language regarding monitored use. And we actually took some language from the old policy and embedded it into this policy based on some of the suggestions the policy subcommittee made. So this, I think this is, still needs a couple tweaks in it. And if everybody's okay with that, well, maybe I'll have Kelly touch base with our technology staff and, and finalize those pieces to come back for our next meeting in June.
Happy to. That would be great. Thank you, Kelly, for doing that. I appreciate your using your area of expertise to get this where it needs to be. So thank you for, thank you for that input.
Yeah, and as I said, in that summary of the overview, you know, each of these four policies were policies we, as the members of the policy subcommittee, Stephanie and Jen at that time, you know, didn't really feel like we had the expertise really to answer some of these questions. So we felt like these were policies we really need to work with some other people to get some input. You know, as I said, the school district's attorneys, Dr. Muse, technology, and to make sure that we were solid on these four policies. As I said, no action is required on any of these policies this evening, but we will look to bring them back for a second reading in our meeting on June 5th.
Great.
So that brings us to a second reading of policy sections K and L of the policy manual, which will actually complete our overview of the policy manual, which we've been doing throughout this school year. The section K and L were really small sections with minimal changes. In many instances, we've updated our policies based on the current MASC recommendations. In section L, we actually eliminated more policies than we did in terms of anything else because they're outdated. So just a couple key changes from section K and section L. Section K for Policy KBBA, Non-Custodial Parent Rights. We adopted this MASC policy that is actually a policy we did not have, but it's an important, that policy is aligned with the role, the, the rights and responsibilities that non-custodial parents have in terms of their students' education and aligns right with the law on that issue. Policy KBE, Relations with Parent Booster Organizations, was actually, replaces our current policy, which is KJA, Relations with Booster Organizations. It kind of expands that out to discuss parents. And Policy KCE, Public Complaints About Curriculum or Instruction Materials. This is actually a duplicate policy that already exists in section I of the policy manual. It lived in two places, and we felt like that didn't make sense to have the same policy live in two different places. So we're recommending that we stay with it in section I, but eliminate it from section K. Within section L, Policy LBC, Relations with Homeschools, we're proposing to eliminate it. Again, this policy was actually a little bit of a duplicate of a, of our homeschool policy that already exists in section I of the policy manual. And same with Policy LBCA, Relations with Non-Public Schools. We're also proposing to eliminate this policy because it is also redundant to policies that already exist in section I. Section I is the section of the policy manual about students. So these things in terms of homeschool and relationship with non-public schools, there was some duplication there between section L and section I of the policy manual. So, you know, our proposal would be that we move section K and L in form this evening. Remember, we've been doing that throughout the process as we approve a section in form. And then our goal would be, in June, that we'd bring back the four policies from this evening, that we did the first reading, have a first, second reading. And after those policies were approved, then we'd have a, then we'd have a discussion about approving the revised policy manual in total, because that way we have covered all the sections. That's if we receive a motion to approve sections K and L in form this evening.
I move to approve sections K and L of the policy manual in form as presented this evening.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, this is something that we've been working on all year. We're, we're so close to the finish line and it's really gonna be exciting. When it's completed and everything's up on the website and the links will be there to all the policies and all the laws, I know that we have some of them linked on our website now, but they'll be, you know.
The reality is, many of our policies rotated. So because we had, the school committee had not gone through a process of revising the entire policy manual in many years.
Especially if it's at MySpace.
So it's something, it's something that needed to, it's something that needed to happen. So I want to thank, you know, Stephanie and Jen originally, now Kelly, for their work on the policy subcommittee to spend a lot of time going through each of these policies and comparing them to the MASC recommendations, and then when appropriate, you know, seeking other advice as well.
Yeah, it's been great to be able to have that opportunity to collaborate and ask questions and say, hey, is this the best fit for our district? I think it's been great to have that opportunity. Like I said earlier, thank you, Kelly, for your willingness to share with your IT knowledge there. And it's been great that we could have some feedback from our attorneys also to make sure, like I said, that we have policies that work for us. sure, like I said, that we have policies that work for us in the best interest of our district. So I will be very excited once that is all tied up very neatly in a bow. So, yeah, thank you to everyone for their, their time. So that brings us to a very, one of my favorite things that we do as a school committee, field trips.
Yeah, so the two field trip proposals, one for Camp Burgess, which will be a sixth grade trip in October of next year. Camp Burgess will be replacing Camp Bourndale, so they're looking to use a different facility this year than Camp Bourndale, but similar type of trip in terms of its experience. And then also looking to approve the Europe trip to Portugal and Spain, actually two years out in April of 2025. Next year's trip was approved last year. They try to approve two years out, really because they have to go through the process. The trip is expensive and they do give families the opportunity, you know, really to pay for this over an extended period of time.
Yeah.
So the approval of the trip for two years from now actually begins to allow families to start enrolling in that trip now.
So I make a motion to. Make a motion to approve the both field trips for grade six to Camp Burgess and Sandwich of October 2023 and for the middle high school European trip to Portugal and Spain of April of 2025.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I look forward to hearing more about those experiences. Perhaps we could invite someone to come speak about the programming, especially where we have a new experience at Camp Burgess. It would be great if we could get some of the kids to come and.
Yeah.
Share their, share their experience and have some of the, you know, chaperones or some of the teachers that are there with them.
We got an agenda item for next time.
Come share. Right? I mean, the kids that are going to Europe are certainly welcome to come, to come report to us and share their travels.
I feel like you need a school committee chaperone.
I was going to say that. When does the school committee get invited to this? Because now it's, that's one I would like to join.
Right? I know. So grateful that our students have these amazing opportunities and that we have teachers that are willing to facilitate these opportunities. It's really great. Like I said, it's one of my favorite things that we do. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. And I'm just going to go to my background agenda because the one I have printed doesn't have everything on there because it's a little outdated. So a few things have come to my attention. So we just have some housekeeping that we're going to do as a committee, one of which is some open meeting law training. I did share with the committee that there is a scheduled training on Wednesday at 1:00 PM. I realize it's during the day and it might not be convenient for those of us who work full-time, but it is something to be mindful of. We did have a training a few years ago. They do offer them on a regular basis. Will we have those acknowledgement forms available to the committee for this year? I went through my binder, but my binder is six years old, almost, yeah, six-ish years old. So.
We certainly can.
Okay. So I would just like to make sure that we have everything, I guess, that we need to have in writing.
Do you want me to address that specifically?
Sure.
So the, one of the requirements of the open meeting law is that when you come onto the school committee, you're given a copy of the open meeting law with a signature form that you accept, that you've received the copy of the open meeting law. Every member of the school committee, when they join the school committee, receives a binder from my office. That binder includes the open meeting law and the certificate. So we can reproduce that again. We can have everybody get a copy of the open meeting law and have you sign the certificate again. Because we do not, honestly, we don't have everybody's certificate.
Yep.
Acknowledging that you received the open meeting law when you became a member of the school committee.
Right. And I'm trying to think, did we do acknowledgements or certificates when we did our training two years ago? I honestly couldn't.
No.
I couldn't remember. I didn't think they did them as part of that process, so.
No, so it was part of the training that we did two years ago with the school district's law firm. There was not a, you didn't have to sign an acknowledgement. The other thing we can mention is that as part of the MASC, MASC Charon the Course, course, that all new school committee members take, open meeting law training is part of that course as well. So members of the school committee have many opportunities to be made aware of the open meeting law, one through receiving it, second through the training of Charon the Course.
Correct. Thank you. I just want to make sure that, like, moving forward, that we're maintaining our own records as a committee. So this is something that I wanted to ask our secretary to manage for us. So on an annual basis, we can review and make sure that we're all on track and that we're being good stewards. So also on there is the state ethics training. So every two years, all state, county, municipal employees must complete a Conflict of Interest Law online training program. So whether you're newly elected or appointed, you're supposed to complete it within 30 days at the beginning of your public service year and then every two years thereafter. So one year it's an acknowledgement form that you've received it, and then one is to actually complete the online training.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I know that the state recently changed.
They have an online program now.
Well, but it's, it's still different because I, because I also have to take the state ethics in my profession.
Okay.
So, and it's a two-year thing, but we had to retake it this year.
Correct.
So we, even though it's been less than two years, we still have to retake it.
Yes, they have until June 9th to complete it.
Yes, we have until June to complete it. It's a new online training program that they opened in January. So we do have until June to complete that. And then once we complete it, it actually creates a certificate that's online. So again, I would just like us, as a committee, just to ensure that every year, especially as we have new members come on, that we just make sure everyone's aware of the training that they're required to take so that, again, we can make sure that we are performing our responsibilities and our duties as school committee members to the fullest extent of the law and being in compliance.
And we will be sending our certificates to Gina?
Um, you can access them online, correct?
I don't know, do you need that?
Do you want us to send them?
Oh, you can, okay. So I didn't have to send it to Gina.
Yeah, because there's like a thing.
The new, the new system tracks it online. So that's new this year. Prior to this year, you had to print out your certificate and turn it to the school and then the school turned it into the town clerk, actually. But this year, they went to a totally online system, so there's no requirement to print any certificates. They are, it's tracked through a database.
So if you haven't used that new system either, you do have to create an account for yourself as well.
Yeah. Correct. And I have to take two different ethics ones. It's like the same, but different.
It's different for a community member than it is for an employee.
For the educator. Yeah. Yeah, I, when I went through it, I didn't really feel that there was a category that was 100% geared towards school committee. So I took the one for education and then I also did the one for municipal committees.
That's what, it's municipal committees.
So I did, I did both because I'm like, I want to see what the educator portion of this looks like, so I just put that to me. Inquiring minds, so.
So I have to take it twice. You took it twice for fun.
I did, you're right. Because I was like, what am I missing?
Fun, that is.
What are their questions? Well, I was just, I was curious. So, and I enjoy learning, so.
It was harder. I'm going to say it was harder this time.
It was.
Like, because it, it was harder.
I thought it was great. I loved that the videos were updated.
Yes.
What I'm going to say, some of, some of the videos that were out there were, previously were very outdated, but I thought it was very helpful in.
Can we provide feedback to them about the training?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I don't know, I, when you took it, there's like all these like flashy things that come up during some of the questions. And it takes like a minute to two minutes for that flashy little bar to show on the screen. So you think that it's stuck.
Yep.
And then you try to refresh it and it makes you start the whole thing all over again. Because it's trying to bring in like flashy screen stuff.
Well, and also it took, like, when you finish, it takes forever to get confirmation.
Yes.
Somebody that I worked with, she thought she hadn't passed it because she hadn't, she'd gotten, she hadn't gotten 100. And she was, retook it six times before she finally got the email that was like, you're fine, please stop.
Oh, wow. Yeah, definitely, it was definitely a little glitchy.
A little glitchy.
Right? Yeah, so I just wanted to be transparent in, in terms of us, you know, moving forward, like I said. And, right? Because we want to be able to serve the community. And we also want people to be able to have faith that we are performing as we should be, right? And taking all the training that we should be in and being as transparent as we can be with our meeting agendas and our minutes that are posted on our school website. And will continue to be posted on our school website moving forward. So just a couple of housekeeping things that I wanted to do because as, again, my involvement with MASC increases and I speak to other school committee members across the Commonwealth and then with NSBA across the country, I learn best practices and I learn how other committees are performing and things that they're tracking and how their officers are fulfilling their roles. So I would like to continue to have us have discussions about improving and growing and being the best that we can be. So those were my few things. Does anyone else have anything they would like to report before we go into executive session? Okay. Colleen? Nope? Okay, so with that, really quickly, calendar is super full, like we mentioned earlier. Everything's on our website, so please go to our website, please come out, please support our students, please fill those seats. The kids love to see people in the audience and love to feel your support. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I, I, where is it? I don't have it on my agenda.
Very last item. It's on my written one, I would give it to you.
Yeah, it's not on my background agenda.
Yeah.
Oh. I make a motion to close the public session and open an executive session to review complaints filed with the Harvard School Committee on May 5th, 2023, and May 9th, 2023, under the opening meeting law against one or more members of the school committee.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session. I will second.
There's another question. These kids have to get a form signed for not Mr. Tresska's sake? And then also there's kids on Zoom, so how do they get credit? Do you print out an attendance?
No, I, I've been signing them all. I know that, I feel like Mr. Tresska's whole class attended this evening, which is great. So I, maybe I should go into their class.
Their class and just sign them all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I will, if you bring your forms down to the office, I will come by and sign them all. Is it, is it a particular class of Mr. Tresskas? What period is it?
Oh, it's like the whole 10th grade.
I know, we have the whole 10th grade on.
Right, we have, we have 32 people on Zoom. Other than our panelists. Thank you all for attending.
I will, I will work with Mr. Tresska and figure out the way for us to sign off their community service.
And it's actually, it was supposed to be an hour, but it's an hour and 45 minutes.
Yeah, it'll be two hours. They'll get two, everyone who attends this evening will get two hours of community service.
Go you guys.
Yeah.